All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the King George County School Board Work Session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. All right, at this time we will have public and employee comment. Mr. Vance, I see we have one online.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, my members of the board. My name is Yvonne Richard and I'm a resident, parent, and teacher in King George County. At the last meeting, there were a number of motions about returning students to in-person instruction. Some board members insisted that a majority of the families want in-person instruction. Today, I took about thirty minutes to enter the data that was presented to you into a Google Sheet to look at the percentages of students wishing to return to in-person instruction. In my review of the data, I included students with no response with the virtual students, since that is what parents were informed would happen if no choice was made. Overall, the data shows that a majority of our students actually prefer to remain virtual. In the secondary level, the amount of instructional time lost to push into a hybrid method of instruction does not seem to be fair to the majority of the students who want to remain virtual. Even at the elementary level, a majority of third through sixth grade students also prefer to remain virtual. If you're interested in looking at the data, I'm happy to share it with you. If we push to return students to the hybrid models, especially in the secondary level, the students are going to lose a lot of instructional time. I'm worried for my high school student who will have one class in main school and all of her governor's schools' classes, where the teacher will have to be teaching both in-person and virtually simultaneously due to the governor's school schedule. I'm worried for my middle school student whose class times will be cut in half and he will have fewer opportunities to meet with teachers and get additional help. At the elementary level, if a student is in a hybrid plan and has to quarantine, then they're also losing instructional time, since teachers will be unable to provide the simultaneous instruction to them. They will not be able to switch to a virtual class and back to in-person when they're out for quarantine. And the students are going to quickly fall behind, and I'm sure that many parents will be quick to blame the teachers for that impact to their learning. Additionally, the dashboard concern in cases of COVID-19 in King George County school remains very difficult to view, and it only is updated monthly. The lack of transparency to what is happening in our school system is troubling to me as an educator and a parent. Yes, I can easily go to the VDH page to see what numbers look like for King George County, but I have to wait a whole month to see what's happening in our school district. I have friends who work in other counties and they get a weekly email from their superintendent informing them of the staff, the number of cases for the students and staff in their buildings. They have been given guidelines that when cases reach a certain level, the buildings move to 100% virtual instruction. Before you make motions to return our students to schools, please ensure that we have plans in order for buildings that are experiencing outbreaks. And finally, I hope that you will determine whether or not we'll be using a six-foot rule as suggested by the CDC or only going to require three feet between our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richard. Mr. Vance, are there any additional? No, that is all. Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, we will move on to our discussion item, the in-person learning update. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm very grateful this evening to have with us our principals from the middle school, the high school, and Ms. Harris is here representing the elementary schools. Mr. Monroe, I see is here as well from King George Elementary. But I asked them last year, per your request, or last week rather, per your request to come back before the board today, just to give you a refresher and give the public a refresher as far as what was presented in early December, along with any recommendations that need to be renewed here this evening. And so I'll be happy to talk once they finish. But with your permission, I'd ask that Ms. Harris lead us off with the elementary, followed by Ms. Collins and then Dr. Boyd with the high school.
You only get three minutes.
No. Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Moving to the second thing, most people are learning. So first of all, I'd like to publicly thank everyone. Since that meeting, you know, as you know, January nineteenth, we brought in the K-2 students. And I'd like to thank all of our hard-working staff, from our teachers, our parent professionals, custodians, maintenance, and especially our cafeteria staff, for all working so hard to make that work. And for us that have K-2 students back in the building, it's just amazing, guys, to have life back in the building, to hear the laughter and the footsteps down the hallway. So, and that couldn't have been accomplished without everyone's hard work. So thank you for that. Before I move into the very short presentation I have, it's really just an update. The current status, I just wanted to let you know, in that planning when we set that up for K-2 to return to school, we made all the necessary changes for the next phase of bringing back grades three through six students for in-person learning and to continue to offer the 100% virtual option for families in those grades as well. So at this time, all class placement changes have been finalized. They have been put in place and they're being implemented at this time. The kids that are coming back in person, they have been, teachers are doing the virtual lessons now, but they're ready to transition right to the in-person. Our virtual kiddos will just keep moving as they have been since January nineteenth. Transportation is in place, excuse me, as well as our new curbside pickup. It's working very efficiently. I know for Kinders Elementary and Potomac, we had to come up with a plan that offered that curbside pickup for families, and it's going great. So I'm glad to report that. Meals are being provided. We have breakfast and we have lunches every day for our students. The health mitigation plan is in operation and it's been working very well. I feel like people are meeting the expectations and the procedures that we put in place, which is keeping everyone safe. And collaboration and curriculum planning is continuing on an ongoing basis, so we can make sure we're staying on pace in our virtual and our in-person models. So I wanted to give you the positives, because that's what we're experiencing now and moving into this next phase should be pretty smooth. So at this point, the PowerPoint that I arranged for you is just a reminder of what that in-person and virtual will look like for our grades three through six. So John, if you could go to the next slide. So pretty much this is our in-person sample. We're going to offer the hybrid model, the blue gold group. They will have two full instructional days a week. The blue, we have presented that they would attend school on Monday and Thursday, and the gold group would attend on Tuesdays and Fridays. Just a reminder, the mindset behind that was we had had a lot of feedback from parents that the asynchronous days can be challenging. So we thought if we kind of staggered this out more strategically, that we could offer more direct instruction, targeted instruction, and offer some feedback time instead of a week. Or, you know, if they came Monday, Tuesday, we wouldn't see them for another whole week. That was the mindset behind that planning. They will have daily specials and recess, just as our K-2 group does. Daily lunch and breakfast will be provided. Small group instruction intervention groups are embedded in the day. And we also have small group and interventions embedded in the virtual classes as well. So no changes there. And we try to keep consistent with the model that we brought for K-2 that's working. The maximum class size is around fifteen. The goal is that it could be up-down number or up-a-number, but that's pretty much consistent with what the whole model has been all along. I have provided you a sample schedule. Please note that this is a sample. We will be teaching all the content, you know, reading and math every day, science and social studies. I believe in some of the virtual model settings that we have now, they're doing one-day social studies, one-day science. So at the end of the week, the same content will be taught. So in-person will have all four core subjects taught within the school day. And like I said, and by the end of the week, it's going to work itself out in the virtual model. Next slide, please. The K-6, I just stuck with the K-6 virtual plan, because it is the same plan that we have had in place since the beginning. They will have, continue to have asynchronous lessons, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, asynchronous lessons on Wednesday. The students will have access to asynchronous lessons for specials teachers. In some buildings, if teachers were able to offer some virtual lessons in the special area that's being provided, but that I cannot, it's not consistent through all three elementary schools, but specials will be offered at a minimum asynchronously. And if they could do it virtual in some situations, then they're making that work too. There's additional support will be available during small group and small group instruction and office hours. We have found that beneficial to offer that office hours for our virtual students, especially in the upper grades, three through six. And the feedback I'm getting from teachers is that students are utilizing that. Parents are utilizing that time for any questions outside of the normal instructional day. So that continue will be in place. And then asynchronous activities and synchronous intervention groups will be utilized as needed as well. For example, a third-grade student, if they are ID'd in PALS, they are receiving that PALS specialized instruction. That's pretty much an overview. I just want to thank you guys for the hard work in getting us back up and running. Like I said, K-2 model, it seems to be going very smoothly. I don't see any obstacles that we're going to have to face bringing, phasing in grades three through six, because everything, all the hard work has been done and we're just ready to just have a date to start at this point. Any questions?
Madam Chair. Just a question, have you needed subs and how's that working?
Well, so far, we have been okay, but I will, that is a concern in the back of our mind is with the substitutes. We have not had been very effective pulling in a random sub on a day-to-day basis. We were given some long-term subs and we've all placed them to fit both models right now, so they're settled and they're teaching. But the day-to-day subs have been a challenge, yes.
So that's still a challenge?
That's still a challenge, yes.
Any additional questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, for those at home, Ms. Collins, our Kinders Middle School principal.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Benson. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to give you an update. That is the high school presentation that's posted up there. Oh, there it is. That's the right one. We could start with the first, well, the second slide. I just wanted to take you back and just give you a little background about the schedule that we're on currently. So if we can go to the next slide, please, Mr. Vance. I'm sure it's coming. There it is. So I just wanted to let you know that in a normal school year, the middle school is on a six-period day. And I think we had talked about that earlier when I've come before you. But when we were looking at starting our school year off 100% virtually, we made the decision to go on the alternating A-B day, simply because of all the demands placed. So right now, what our students do, they attend their first, second, and third-period classes on Mondays and Thursdays, and fourth, fifth, and sixth-period classes on Tuesdays and Fridays. And you can see by the bell schedule that they do have that hour of direct live synchronous instruction. And then the second hour, which is referred to several times during my presentation, is utilized for small group meetings with teachers, extra support, guided practice, work completion, and things like that. So that's the schedule that we've been on since August. Next slide, please. So as our scheduling committee looked at a return to in-person plan, we had several priorities as outlined on the slide, as we are directed to find both that in-person and virtual option. Clearly, promoting health and safety for all our students and staff is a huge priority. We need to maximize our instructional time with the given resources. Our goal was to keep students with their current teachers, because unlike elementary, and we've talked about this before as well, at the secondary level, teachers are more content-specific, so their licensure does not allow for just simply saying this number of teachers will be virtual, because many of our teachers are specialized and there's only teach, like, there's only one art teacher. There's only one band teacher, for example. So we had to take a look at, well, how can we meet those demands of having both types of schedules and take all of that into account? We also, I think I told you this when we talked in a previous board meeting, we took off the table having our teachers try to present in both modalities simultaneously. We did not feel like our middle school students or our teachers would benefit from having to monitor and manage both in-person students in their classroom and teaching virtually at the same time. So the model that we developed, and it's similar to the high school that will be presented next, is a virtual plan in the morning and an in-person plan in the afternoon. Next slide, please. So our scheduling committee took that into account, along with the data, health mitigation concerns and considerations when developing our return in-person learning plan. You can see from our data that it consistently showed in the two surveys that we had a high anticipated in-person expectation. Our first survey, we had 61% of families choosing in-person. And even though it dropped to 41% in September, the default on the survey was in-person. So we were looking at 74%, if you counted up all the numbers, of anticipated in-person students. So we used that information, along with all the health mitigation planning, to develop our plan. Our data also at that time showed that we had ten teachers who were on medical exemption, and they serve anywhere between ninety-five and one hundred and eighty-six students per any given class period during the day. And that's a lot of students to provide coverage for if you don't have the adults in the building. So we had to take all of that into account. And we came up with our hybrid plan, that's on our next slide. So what does it look like? On our next slide, you can see that the hybrid model, students will attend person in school two days per week in the afternoon. Our blue and gold group is different than the elementary blue and gold group for the reasons that we talked about with the alternating days. So our blue group will come on Monday and Tuesday afternoons. Our gold group will come on Thursday and Friday afternoons. Our 100% virtual model, students will participate from home four days in the mornings. So that's the snapshot of our plan. Next slide, please. The rationale for why we chose that plan. And I have alluded to this already. Using our data, we needed to plan to accommodate the anticipated number of students that desired in-person instruction, as well as ensure that we had the adequate adult supervision coverage for our remote-only teachers. We also needed to make sure that we had enough staff in the building to implement all of the health mitigation, safety measures. Our goal was to maintain our students with their current classroom teacher and, of course, protect instructional time needed to cover the required curriculum. Next slide, please. So when I came before you in December, I had this glorious color-coded graphic that I think caused a lot of confusion. It is kind of confusing when you look at it at first glance. But we feel like it accomplishes the committee's priorities, and it does preserve many elements from our current plan that we are on right now. The live instructional lessons are still roughly the same amount of time. They're about an hour daily, just like they are right now with our students in the 100% virtual model. All students will keep their same teachers, and all students will continue to have four days of live instruction as they do now. But what is different is the time of day when they receive that. So we know the instructional day is going to look different. Middle school teachers will teach their virtual lessons in the morning, and then they'll teach that in-person lesson in the afternoon. Where this is different from the elementary plan, what we're asking our hybrid students to do is to participate virtually in the morning on the two days that they don't come in the building. And we felt like this was necessary to maximize instructional time and minimize the need for them to work asynchronously. We also felt like with the A-B alternating schedule, if we did not do this, that our in-person students would only have one day a week with their teacher. And that did not seem to be beneficial for the students. So it is a true hybrid model, where they participate two days per week in person in the afternoon and two days per week virtually from home. And as noted by one of our earlier speakers, the new virtual and in-person bell schedule does eliminate that second hour of class that our students currently are using to complete guided practice, participate in small group meetings, and get help and assistance from their teacher. We also need to answer the question, what will students do if their teacher is a remote-only? And the way that we will be covering that, you know, you asked a question earlier about substitute teachers. We do have substitute teachers that have been assigned to our buildings, and they will be utilized to help supervise in classrooms where teachers are not available to supervise. They will also be supervising in a larger setting. And students whose teachers are remote-only will be teaching from their remote location, and students will use their Chromebooks to access their teachers, as they do now in a virtual setting, but they will be doing that within the school building, whether it's in a classroom or a larger area such as the cafeteria. Next slide, please. So what does it actually look like? Well, we're already practicing this now with our Internet Cafe students. At arrival, there is a health screening for all students. They participate in that with the temperature tech. They respond to symptoms on a chart as they enter the building. All students are expected to bring their fully-charged, student-issued Chromebook daily. If they don't have one, there'll be one at the building for them to use. All students will be wearing a mask at all times, when in the school building, while on the school buses, unless otherwise directed, such as times for mass breaks. And we do provide those regularly during instructional time. We will be using hand sanitizer, hand washing. This is expected. It's encouraged. In fact, we'll be, you know, following all the health mitigation strategies, including physical distancing expectations of six feet in the classrooms. Skipped over breakfast, breakfast at the middle school is a grab-and-go breakfast. That will be available for students as soon as they come in the building to take and eat at their first class, which is at 11:25. But some teachers, teenagers, don't get up and eat until that time. So they'll be eating at the middle school. Next slide, please. At the conclusion of each class, students will be cleaning their own workstations. And when we have the class change, they won't be going to lockers. We're asking students to bring everything with them that they will need for their three daily classes, along with their fully-charged Chromebook, to make sure I put it in there so that they don't forget. As they walk out the door, they're going to be receiving hand sanitizer, and we encourage, like I said, hand washing frequently. We will have directional signage in the hallways, and we've always expected students to walk on the right, but it will be more important now than ever, because the direction of the hallways is very important. Restrooms are accessible during class time only and one student at a time only. Students will be given lunch, but they will not be eating it at the middle school. It'll be a grab-and-go for them to take home and prepare at home. And students will be leaving at 2:25. Both breakfast and lunch are free of charge for all students. And we will have adult supervision in place to ensure compliance with all of our health mitigation strategies throughout the school day. And I can tell you, we have had no issues whatsoever with following that protocol ever since we've started our Internet Cafe with our students. It's gone very, very smoothly. So just as we head towards the end of the month, we'll be getting into the first week of March. And I did want to let the board know that our eighth-grade students will be taking their SOL writing tests on March 2nd through March 4th. And this is an in-person test. Students will come based on their assigned days. This is the largest group by far that we will have had at the middle school so far. But something, you know, that we are looking forward to, so I wanted you to be aware of that. Another relevant date, as we wrap up our third quarter, is all of our students take third-quarter nine-week tests, well, they take nine-week texts, tests every quarter. The third-quarter nine-weeks test begin on March 11th. So March 11th and 12th, seventh and eighth graders will be taking science and civics nine-weeks tests. March 22nd and 23rd, they'll be taking their math nine-weeks test. And finally, on March 25th and 26th, they're going to be taking their English and world history nine-weeks test. I will be happy to answer questions, should you have any.
Would you repeat the dates for me?
I absolutely will. So eighth-grade SOL writing tests will be administered in person to students on March 2nd through March 4th, based on the date that they are assigned. The third-quarter nine-week tests are, begin on March 11th and conclude on March 26th. So March 11th and 12th, and it takes two days because of our alternating days. Science and civics, March 22nd and 23rd are all math classes. And March 25th and 26th are English and world history classes.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Collins, I'll add on to that topic. So with the SOLs, you said that'll be the largest number of students in the building. What's the, what does the setup look like for the SOLs? How many are they in classrooms? How many students are there? What does it look like?
So we've divided them into three groups. They're based on blue group on Tuesday and gold group on Thursday. And Wednesday will be students that need a small group or other testing, special testing accommodations. And we will be utilizing some of our larger spaces, like in the cafeteria. We'll be setting up desks in the gym, in the auxiliary gym, and some of our other large classroom spaces as well to spread students out as much as possible. So they will be a minimum of six feet apart from each other.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Collins?
I have one. So Ms. Collins, with the educational content that is in the middle school, the schedules and the disruption that could possibly occur with this transition or this change, is there a specific time within the structure of the quarter? I mean, obviously, we've discussed the SOLs of when it would be either beneficial or detrimental in order to make this transition to go to in-person learning?
Well, it would definitely not be beneficial on our SOL testing days to expect students to make that transition. You know, outside of that, knowing that the nine-weeks tests are actual test grades, those might not be the best days, but we're willing to work with whatever dates that you give us.
So possibly prior to those days or after those days is what would be the driving factor?
Those are certainly things that are consideration, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I have an additional question. How are the students in the Internet Cafes? I assume they're incorporated into the blue gold, the blue gold schedule with the, with the return to in-person?
Students that are currently participating in the Internet Cafe are accessing their virtual learning just from our cafeteria. So when we return to in-person, our Internet Cafe is, we were not planning on running our Internet Cafe, because that space will be needed for the day-to-day activities. So they are, you know, some of the students that are there now are in-person learners that will return to the building, and some of them are virtual only, but they are choosing to come use the Internet Cafe to access their virtual learn.
Okay, so the ones that have chosen to remain virtual, are there some of the Internet Cafe students now that have, will be remaining virtual and they would no longer be coming?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So does that limit any of the students that do not have access to internet in any way? Or are they choosing?
It potentially could. And we, if, if needed, we would need to look at numbers. But we are utilizing or intend to utilize the space in the cafeteria to supervise students who do not have an in-person teacher.
So is, is there a possibility that if there is a number of students that do not have internet at home, because even when they're on asynchronous days or virtual days, they're going to need that. So are they going to be left out in the cold or will we still be able to?
No, no, we'd still, if I understand your correction, question. No, if students are relying on the Internet Cafe, that, that term has come to mean different things as we've expanded. So the initial Internet Cafe was for students who didn't have internet access at home, despite our best efforts to provide hotspots from multiple providers, still didn't have access. We would still find a way to, to create access for those students, those originals. And if I think if that's the question, well, just to clarify, those students who are there electively but do have access, then of course the, right.
I would say most of our Internet Cafe students are participating there to provide structure to their day. And when we return to in-person, they'll be joining us. That is the majority of our Internet Cafe students.
Okay, any additional questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Thank you.
Next, we, we thank Dr. Boyd for coming here to present on behalf of King George High School. Thank you, Dr. Boyd.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity. I hope to provide you enough information this evening to inform your decision on how to move forward. I can't promise you that it's going to be easy. These are very challenging times with challenging issues. So I'll certainly describe to you our plan and really also talk with you hopefully about some of the challenges that we're experiencing as well. So number one, as a reminder of what I presented on December 7th, I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about some of the scheduling subcommittee priorities that we had all through this process when we developed and continued to revise a plan for secondary students, both in the virtual model and in the in-person model. So if you take a look at that first slide, those were our priorities, are really our pillars in creating a plan. Obviously, we had to create a virtual and in-person option for our students and families. Because we went into this year not really knowing what tomorrow was going to bring, we continued to make sure that we put students first and provided as much opportunity for our students as we could, as we continued to adjust our schedule. So in the virtual option and in the in-person option, we tried to make sure that our opportunities were equitable across the board. We wanted to make sure that in whatever plan we pushed forward, we protected instructional time. And you'll see that becomes more and more challenging. And we'll talk a little bit about that as we move forward. We also, in the plan, wanted to appreciate the added demands that we've placed on our instructional staff. And I'll talk to you guys a little bit about what that looks like in greater detail. And we obviously have to acknowledge our health mitigation responsibilities when developing our reopening plan. So those were our priorities in, in creating a plan that I'll present to you here in a second. Next slide, please, John. So the way I'm going to shake this plan is in three areas because our challenge is really one of scale. The idea that schools have been closed is, is not entirely accurate. Schools have been open, but our challenge is one of getting everybody back into schools. And that's will be our challenge, that is our challenge. And as we move forward, really kind of a sobering fact is that as long as we have social distancing as an expectation, filling this school with 1,400 students is going to be a challenge. So, you know, that's, that's been something that's weighed on my mind heavy and something that we've continued to talk about in great detail, about how we move forward and how long that expectation is going to create the need for different types of scheduling. So I'm going to talk to you guys a little bit about student capacity and what that looks like right now, building capacity and then staff capacity. Next slide, please, John. So student capacity for our reopening plan. Next slide. This is difficult to see, but hopefully you guys can see it in your handout a little better. If you take a look at that table, on the left-hand side of the table, you have all of our grades, ninth through 12th. On the top of that table, you're going to see the response given from the most recent survey. So this is the King George High School survey that went out at, right after New Year's, and it was most recently revised on January 11th. And what you'll see is that if you look at the bottom of that table, we had 212 total students who did not respond to the survey. And those are broken down by grade levels. The next column is you'll see that we have 461 students that responded to the survey, which is equivalent to 33% of our, of our student body that would elect to come back in person if that opportunity, opportunity was presented to them. The virtual column, the next column over, we had 741 students, which is about 52% of our student population that would elect to remain virtual if in-person was an option. And then over on the far right-hand side, you just see the King George High School total column. So just in summation, we had 15% of our students that, that did not respond. That, that number's a bit inflated because 77 of those students are alternatively placed students or January graduates. So that number's a little bit smaller than 15%. But nonetheless, 212 students that did not provide a response, 461 who elected to come back in person and 741 that would like to remain virtual. Next slide, please. I'm not sure if you can play this or not, John. What this is, is in, in preparation of returning to in-person instruction, a couple of our teachers, Ms. Ashley Davis, who is our department chair for Governor's School, and Katrina Wines, along with a host of, I'm not sure if that was it. Of, of our other teachers have put together really a student expectation video. So as soon as our students walk in the door, they're going to have an idea of what the expectations are for all of the mitigation strategies that we have to follow. One-way hallways, room capacity, wearing a mask through the instructional day, really just how school is going to operate in this environment. And we'll push that video out almost immediately as soon as we find out when we need to. And then really, on the first day of school, making sure that we establish those expectations early on so that we effectively prescribe to the mitigation strategies. Next slide, please. I want to talk a little bit about our building capacity now in this plan. Next slide, John. All right, so our challenge from a building capacity issue was taking a look and, and a, a high school master schedule is a Rubik's Cube. I mean, it's, it's just so many complex parts. So one of the components of that master schedule is the capacity of every single classroom in the building. So what you'll see in that table on the left-hand side is in blue, the room number. So that column is, is a room number. The next number next to it in yellow is the capacity for that room. So this is the number of students and teachers that can occupy that room. And that's based on square footage of the classroom and really any other physical barriers in the classroom, like lab equipment or immovable furniture or things of that nature. So we went through measure square footage based on the blueprints and then also went into every single classroom and looked at some of those physical barriers to come up with what we thought would be an appropriate number for a room capacity across the building. Every single one of our classrooms has a room capacity limit sign on it. You can see that on the right-hand side of the slide. So just to check us, check ourselves throughout the instructional day, every single classroom has a room capacity sign on it with the number of students able to enter that classroom. And then, I don't know if you'll be able to do it in the presentation here, John, but that link there where it says class enrollment breakdown. And I can share this with you guys afterwards if you'd like. What that shows is a spreadsheet, a Google spreadsheet of every single teacher, every class they teach and a breakdown of every section as far as the number of students that will remain in person and the number of students that will remain virtual. So for 300 sections in the high school, we have capacity numbers in person and virtual for every single section that, that's offered. I can tell you that the numbers for in-person, as you've seen, are relatively low. It's a 33, 33% of our total population. So there's only four sections in the entire building that exceeds 15 students. So you'll see that the number 15 fits well into most of our classroom sections. There's only four that, that exceed that number. And without going into too much detail, two of those sections are, of course, where we offer band and PE as a split. So actually, half of those students would be in the gym and half of those students would be in the band room. So there's only two classes, two sections that we have to make arrangements for in order to accommodate our stu, the 33% of students that would return in person. Okay, next slide, please. So given those numbers, we began this plan with an understanding that we could probably accommodate about 50 to 60% of our students in person if they elected to return. If it went above that, then we would have to get creative with scheduling. But because it is well below that, at the high school, we can offer in-person instruction from, on every day of the week outside of Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. So for us, any student that elects to come in person will come four days a week. Now, similar to the middle school schedule, and this is something I, I wouldn't mind explaining in greater detail. Similar to the middle school schedule, because we are offering instruction in two modalities, virtual and in-person, we are carving up that instructional block more than we have in the in-person modality or in the virtual modality. So, so this hybrid modality, I'll, I'll talk to you about it here in a next screen, does cut our instructional time, which, which is concerning for, for myself and much of our instructional staff. As Ms. Collins said earlier, I can tell you that many school divisions that explored the idea of putting both of those modalities on top of each other early on in this process, teaching virtual and teaching in-person at the same time, it, it hasn't gone well. So, so we're very comfortable in the idea that we believe that to effectively provide a quality instruction, teaching virtually and teaching in-person have to be separate. And so that's how we developed our instructional day. And again, similar to the middle school, our first floor block, four blocks, which are 45 minutes in length, will start at 7:30 in the morning, virtually, end at 10:45. Everyone takes a half an hour lunch break in the middle of the day. And from 11:20 to 2:35 in the afternoon, we offer four 45-minute in-person sessions. Next slide, please. So finally, we, we need to take a look at our staff capacity. Next slide, please. And then this is our medically exempt staff right now. So for teachers, we currently have 18 teachers that are medically exempt. And those teachers do provide direct supervision. So we will need to have sub-coverage or some level of coverage for those individuals. Paraprofessionals, we currently have five. Again, direct supervision is provided by those individuals. Counselors, we have two, and support staff, we have three. Counselors and support staff, we've come up with a way of offering virtual services, virtual appointments, where we don't have to provide direct supervision to those, for those staff positions currently. I'm happy to say that right now, given these numbers, we, we have all bases covered as far as beginning in-person instruction and having ample amount of supervision in the building. Hopefully that, you know, as we continue to move forward and, and we get our second dose of the vaccination and, and other things that would help lessen our risk, I'm hoping those numbers get better. Next slide, please. King George High School teacher health mitigation duty. So again, when we start school, there's a whole new set of duties that teachers will need to have in order for us to get through a school day. So the way I've broken this up is, is by, by the school day, the first section, which you can see on the left-hand column, is arrival. We've got teachers that will monitor the hall in the morning. We've got teachers that will do the morning screening. This is the health screening where we take temperature from all students and, and ask the health mitigation questions. We have students that will be screening on both sides of the building, cafeteria side and on the bus loop side. During the school day, we'll have a very large number of teachers during their planning block, providing classroom coverage for, for some of the holes that we couldn't fill with our long-term substitute positions. We've got a very large number of teachers that are going to have to help out with restroom coverage, making sure that we don't end up with a large number of students in the bathroom at, at any one time. And then student hallway escorts, we also have during the school day. And dismissal is, is really the opposite, you know, of the arrival. We'll have meal stations set up so that they can take their meals home with them, afternoon hallway coverage and afternoon bus coverage. So really, if you counted all that up, pretty much every single one of our teachers outside of one or two have an extra duty to perform in order to make sure we can take care of these mitigation strategies and effectively employ them. Next slide, please. This is our cleaning protocols, and this is something that we've talked about since the very beginning of the year. Ms. Saunders is familiar with this slide and it's broken down by the things that we have to accomplish daily. So all of those tasks at the top of that table are things that have to be done by the day. The next section of that table is by the hour. And then the final section of that table is intensified cleaning, which is really after every use. And we're doing all of those things now, but obviously on a much lower, a smaller scale because we only have staff in the building. But those, those demands will greatly increase when we have 500 individuals in the building. Next slide, please. All right, so this is, I'll just finish with this point. We have had a lot of discussion. I will tell you that after your board meeting last Monday night, we had the opportunity as a staff to have a faculty meeting on Wednesday to talk about how to move forward, some of the considerations that we would need to make. One of the great things that I took away from that was that I had an opportunity for teachers. We created a Google document so that we could talk about what made sense as far as moving forward. And I had about 80 responses. I can tell you that generally speaking, the modalities is something that came up a lot. One of the themes in, in those responses from, from our instructional staff was what types of modalities we offer. Without a question, I can tell you, myself and every teacher in our building, I think I can speak on behalf of them. If you told us tomorrow that we could have 100% of our students back into this building, there's no better education we can provide. Tick or tape parade and tears and everything, we'd be happy as can be that we've got 100% of our students in this building. And it's the best education that we know we can provide. I think second to that, the modality that's providing the best education right now for us, it is 100% virtual. Our instructional time is not cut like it would be in a hybrid model, having to serve two modalities. And although it's not perfect, which in-person's not perfect either, creating things like the Internet Cafe and other support services to buttress really the, the 100% virtual option has served us well. What becomes a little more concerning and where the comments from the teachers came was, was not with when to start school or I think we're all comfortable now with how we have to start school. But it's what we would be going into. And there's real reservations about having to divide our instructional day into in half. On the high school level, as you know, there's graduation requirements, there's content that has to be covered. And I can tell you that over my career, when you start talking about cutting instructional time, it really gets teachers moving in their seat a lot because they, they are very concerned about having to cover a large amount of information. Even pre-COVID, it was stressful to think about the amount of information they had to cover in, in a semester. When we start talking about less and less instructional time as we move forward, it be, it, it becomes very difficult to deliver all that content in, in a shortened amount of time. So again, returning to school for us will not be an issue of preparedness. If you tell me tomorrow, we're going back to school, we're ready to go. All of our conversations as an instructional staff has really turned into how and what are we going into and, and. And as I said on December seventh, when I talked to you guys, I think we're so focused right now on getting kids back into school. I just want to make sure that the grass is greener on the other side and what we end up providing is the best that we possibly. And I'll stop there for any questions. I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Are there any questions?
Ms. Pancy?
Yeah, I just have a question. I just want to make sure I understand. So you're saying with the four days instructional, that would be full day, all day, for four days?
So it'll be the same, the bell schedule for the day starts off in the morning with virtual sessions and in the afternoon with in-person sessions.
So the students would be virtual at home in the morning?
The virtual students would be virtual at home in the morning. All of them, every student that elected to go virtual would be virtual at home in the morning. And then all students that elected to be in-person would be in-person every day in the afternoon.
Have you looked at a full-day schedule in-person? I guess that's for anybody. Has anybody looked at a full-day schedule for in-person? Because I know there are some jurisdictions that have done that and find that successful.
Can you, I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
So the virtual would be virtual all day based on the schedule that you have now, and the in-person would come in just like a normal school day from, I mean, I know high school isn't nine to three, but, you know, seven to two-thirty or whatever the hours are. So it'd be a full day.
So the challenge with that is that we're only operating within a school day from seven-thirty to two-thirty-five. In that same amount of time, we have to offer, there's one of two ways you can do it. As I said earlier, and as Ms. Collins said, you can stack them on top of each other. You can offer virtual and in-person at the exact same time, and you can get a full school day that way where you're teaching virtual and in-person at the same time. I can tell you that from what I've read and been able to research, it hasn't been a very quality experience for teachers or for students because teaching at a computer screen and teaching students behind the computer screen at the same time is ineffective. So if that's not the model we're comfortable with, then we have to take that instructional day and really split it in half. We can take half the day and make it virtual and half the day and make it in-person. Or you can get a little more detailed with it and make half the instructional block in-person or half the instructional block virtual. But any way you cut up the pie, you have to provide some undivided time to your virtual students and some undivided time to your in-person students. So, you know, outside of really saying, and this is not going to be anything that anybody wants to hear, but outside of taking the school day and stretching it late into the evening, you're not going to get a full virtual instructional day and a full in-person instruction day without stretching that instructional day way into the evening.
Yeah, so it's not like at the lower levels where you have certain teachers teach virtual and certain teachers teach in-person. You have a teacher that is teaching both in-person and virtual at the same time.
Right.
Or not at the same, physically at the same time, but within the same day.
Yes, I understand what you're saying. So in the lower grades, where students, and again, this is not, you know, I'm on the high school level, but I'm going to make the assumption that on the lower grades, they can find, they can take an entire group of students that have elected to go virtual and assign them to one teacher for that instructional day. We can't do that on the high school level because, as I've talked about a little bit earlier, there are three hundred different classes that happen throughout our instructional day. Some of those classes are only taught by one teacher during one time of the day.
Right.
Within that same class, there's three kids that want to come in-person and seventeen that want to stay virtual. So it would be impossible to redevelop the master schedule to create just a virtual teacher and just an in-person teacher for every single section in the master schedule. I can tell you, we've talked a little bit, I don't know what the future holds. We began this process, again, with the understanding that we were really trying to minimize any negative impact we had on students. So going into this process early in August, we said, any opportunity that a student would have had to had that transcript or to get them into college or whatever it was going to be, we were going to provide them that opportunity. If social distancing becomes something that stays with us for years to come, it will be challenging to not come up with a schedule in the future that does exactly what Ms. Pancy is talking about, where we have to figure out how we can offer a virtual environment and how we can offer an in-person environment. But I can tell you that if that's the outcome, one of the results of that or the negative impacts of that is that we will severely limit students' ability to access everything we offer in either one of those modalities.
I would just be curious to see how some other districts do it. So you also mentioned that the room capacity, what parameters did you use to limit the room capacity? Did you go off, specifically, did you go off using the six-foot? And were those individual desks or were they larger desks with alternating?
It was three-foot with a mask as a mitigation strategy. And then really, all of our classrooms have different types of furniture. Our science classrooms have large, black lab tables. We use, you know, one seat for that six-foot or five-foot table. But we went into, right before we left for Christmas break, we had a group of teachers that stayed here one evening. We went into every single classroom together and we talked about what the physical limitations of each classroom was so that we can come up with a number we agreed on, based on three-foot, social distancing and any physical limitations.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have two questions. And this one may well be more difficult and involved than it would be helpful. But in terms of the teacher duties, is there any way that we can integrate either volunteers or some kind of additional assistance for the teachers? I am so worried about teachers having to do these amounts of I mean, I know that would drive Ms. Yuzersky off the wall, but in terms of volunteers, but has that been discussed?
We've looked at other options and we really explored our substitute list. You can see how extensive that list is. I mean, we're talking about really a hundred additional responsibilities that are created as all of these parts of this building begin to move. I would love to, you know, with everyone's permission, to screen and have a number of volunteers. I know that's, you know, that's difficult to come by. I think really part of what I see in that list is hopefully, I've seen since day one that the, and I can only speak on behalf of the secondary teachers, and I've had a unique perspective as we've worked our way through this process. See the effort and the effort that they've not only given, but the effort that they've said they will give. And it is, it's amazing to me to see our teachers being able to do what they've done since August with very little understanding of what this all meant and what they're willing to do moving forward. I could talk to you all night about how I just appreciate working for them.
Thank you, thank you. And I can only begin to applaud the efforts of every single role in that high school. I can't imagine the counselor is dealing with that master schedule. I'm surprised any of them have any hair left just at this point. I guess the other question that I had was that, did I understand you correctly that you are recommending that we stay one hundred percent virtual for the remainder of the school year?
This issue has, and again, this is not my position.
I mean, that's my, that's why I, yeah.
I don't think I got that. I got, we are ready to go.
Yeah, there's so many levels of complexity to this issue. The point I was making was one strictly of instructional value. There's a lot of things right now that schools have become responsible for. We hear a lot about mental health services. We hear a lot about other things that we're having a challenging time delivering in this environment. But strictly from an instructional standpoint, keeping our instructional time as much as we possibly can keep is something that is valuable to our instructional staff. And I can't speak highly enough about them. And I know TC earlier in the year, Mr. Collins earlier in the year, came in and kind of took almost a virtual tour. Right now, any day of the week, we have a Google spreadsheet with every single synchronous session that our teachers are teaching. You can click on that link whenever their class is in session and you'll see an amazing job. Many of you have sat in on some of the classes. It's commendable to see the education that they're offering in this virtual environment. It's not perfect. But right now, we have an ample amount of instructional time to address a lot of the challenges that we have. It's not perfect, but we lose a lot of that in the hybrid environment. And I don't want to tell you, I don't want to make a recommendation either way. I mean, that's a hard job that you guys have to deal with. My argument was one just of instructional value.
I understand, thank you. Yeah, that clarifies. But, and I do understand all the pieces. The mental health picture is so incredibly important. The instructional piece is so important. Finding those seventy-seven or two-hundred students really concerns me. I'm ready to go out knocking on doors. So I think you all and your staff have done a fantastic job. I just can't applaud you enough. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Just to clarify, that seventy-seven number, correct me if I'm wrong, but that includes January graduates?
Yes, sir.
Which was probably around four-thirty-some or so?
The January graduates, I want to say, if I remember correctly, was around fifty-two. And then we've got about twenty or so of that seventy-seven that are alternatively placed. So the reason we didn't get a response, obviously, from that seventy-seven was because it wouldn't need to give us.
Right, right, understand, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Collins, have any questions? No, okay. I have a couple, Dr. Boyd, thank you. Let's see, so the first, so just to make sure I understand, so the reduction in instructional time, that's across both the in-person students and the virtual students, correct? Because the day is being split in half.
Yeah, so our, right now, in-person instructional block or one hundred percent virtual block is an hour and a half long. When we have to serve both those modalities, we're taking half of that instructional block, giving it to in-person, half to virtual, so forty-five minutes each.
Great, okay. And so I assume the, so your schedule, which I appreciate, the, so I assume, again, I haven't thought it through, but I'm assuming that the decision to go with the reduced blocks, like the, cutting the hour and a half to forty-five minutes, was to continue with the live instruction four days a week for everyone instead of doing like a two and two-day that had full hour and a half blocks? I'm assuming that kind of works out. Is that accurate?
Say it again, so opposed to having a blue and gold group?
Yeah, with longer, with longer blocks.
So again, it's just how you want to cut it up. During an average instructional week, you could have had a longer amount of instruction to one particular modality during a given day. But within that same instructional week, you're only going to have the same number of instructional hours that we can provide. Now, what we were thinking, one of the considerations we were making early on is that we wanted to increase the frequency in which we saw our students as close to every day as we possibly could. So that was kind of the thought process in having smaller instructional blocks every day versus possibly longer ones every other day.
Right, right, I understand, thank you. And then, let's see, my other, I think I just had one other question. So then, how did the, I know we've gotten some feedback from like folks in governor's school, how did the governor's school schedules align with both, I guess, our current schedule, the current virtual schedule, and also with the proposed hybrid?
So Ms. Davis, who I mentioned earlier, Ms. Grigsby at the governor's school, both those ladies and myself have sat down and looked at it. So governor's school schedules have always been a little different in the building than the general ed students. We've worked out to this point now where all of those modalities are served. There is one group now, now with the governor's school schedules, the ninth and tenth grade students have classes at a particular time, eleventh and twelfth grade students have classes at a particular time. So if I can remember correctly, there is one group of students, I believe it's our younger students, that if they chose the virtual model, they would have to attend their in-person classes virtually. So it's a small group of students where we have to make that consideration. But for the most part, like I said, Ms. Davis, Ms. Grigsby and I have worked out most of the bumps with that. They've both offered informational nights to our governor's school student parents to make sure everybody's aware of how that schedule moves forward because it's always a little bit unique.
Okay, thank you.
I have one, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
How many hours are teachers required for their duty a day?
There's no specific number. Typically, and again, in this environment, as you can see, it's probably increased. But anywhere between fifteen and thirty minutes, I would say, is usually a duty. Now, they range, there are some that would do bus duty in the morning, that could, it could be fifteen minutes long, but cafeteria duty during the middle of the day is going to be a half an hour. Just depends, and we rotate those duties through the school year.
So those twenty-eight teachers that are on, or staff that are on medically exempt, what are their additional duties? You're losing fourteen hours a day in duties.
It could be challenging. Now, what we hope to do, and we've talked about that and considered it, is that may be a group of individuals that can help us with phone calls, working on attendance issues that we're having. Obviously, it's not going to be a duty where we can be in the building, but there's other duties that we can do or ask individuals to do remotely. Again, I'm hoping that as we work through our second dose and everything else and our risk factors diminish a little bit, I'm hoping that that list gets better. But again, that's a hope.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My next question is for Dr. Benson. So the medically exempt staff, will the vaccine bring more staff back after the second dose?
It's a good question, one we're in the midst of researching, you know, person by person. I know Ms. Yuzersky has sent out communication to those that have qualified for medical exemption to determine if the vaccine will then allow them to return in person. And in some cases, that's the case. We're still working through that list in these days. I'm looking at her past years, looking for confirmation. But we have seen, we have heard from four or five? Seven instead of four or five.
They're planning on returning because they feel like it will because
No, sir.
there's exempt.
No, sir, there's there's situations that would have changed where it would qualify them to return.
Okay, any final questions for Dr. Boyd or Dr. Benson? All right, thank you, Dr. Boyd.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd.
I'm sure, can I just, again, I want to thank all three of our presenters, and Mr. Monroe, thank you for your support being here. I also want to thank the colleagues that they represent here tonight. And you've heard testimony, and at times, very candid testimony on behalf of their colleagues. So I think you get a sense of while the decisions are difficult and debate on this platform are just as difficult, the teachers and the staff who have kept things going certainly have a level of expertise at the operational level that is valuable. And I appreciate you all bringing that information to us this evening for this board's consideration. The only, I know that you're anxious to deliberate, I do have just a couple of things to mention to update the recommendation I left you with last- to update the recommendation I left you with last week. First, we do know already that the vaccine that is planned for, or was planned for tomorrow and Friday has been moved to Sunday. So I know that I recommended to you March fourth, in part because March fourth represented a date that was two weeks from the dose two scheduled administration. Now that that's moved to Sunday, I would only ask that you consider moving that March fourth date to March eighth, which would just be the following Monday to allow the full two weeks for staff who receive the vaccine to develop the immunity as far as protection. I know that uh, I've had conversations with both Ms. Collins and Dr. Boyd regarding, because I know that that would be a you know, a consideration, or was a consideration last meeting for this board. I've also talked with Ms. Picarello in transportation. And I do want to mention that we have, you know, the transportation scheduling and routing, as you can imagine, is, is quite a task itself. They are currently working and will complete bus routes to support the SOL testing that Ms. Collins mentioned earlier over that timeframe. Once those dates of SOL testing have concluded, they would then be able to basically erase those routes and jump into the routing for the secondary return should this board decide that that's prudent. So I'd only, that's just one other factor to keep in consideration in terms of any you know, targeting as far as a, a return date for our secondary students. That said, I, I would, I would ask the board to consider something not earlier than the twenty-second, which is really just the week after the spring break when we return. So that would give us a week. If we return March eighth with three through six, they would have a week of instruction. We could also collect data in terms of the, you know, the health metrics, students referred for symptoms, that type of thing during that week. It would give us that week for that to settle, and then it would give us spring break week and the very next week, then we could return the secondary students if you chose. Or if you wanted to adhere to the original recommendation of the twenty-ninth, which coincides with the fourth nine weeks, that's certainly acceptable as well. But I did want to throw that variable out to you on behalf of transportation and the work that they're doing.
So are you saying that it's not feasible based on transportation to return all K through twelve back on March eighth?
Yes. Saying that we would need some time to develop those secondary bus routes and communicate those to families.
And that's because all of the students are being transported into the classroom at some point in time for those SOL testings, based on the dates that Ms. Collins gave us.
Majority, I believe. Ms. Collins mentioned that there were a good number participating. Is that correct? Oh, the, the question is that the number of students participating that we know of participating in the SOL testing at the middle school is the vast majority of students. Is that correct? That's, that's correct.
Oh, eighth grade. So the eighth grade SOLs are the second through the fourth. And then the others are thir- the eleventh to the twenty-sixth.
Those are the benchmark tests. Those are our, our school-level tests. We could, we could work with those tests. I'm sorry.
So which, which ones, right, so you're only talking about the SOLs for the second to the fourth?
Correct.
So there is no limitation of us opening all the classes on the eighth? K through twelve?
Outside of the time needed to route those buses for our middle and high school students. That, that's the concern. Is that we don't have enough time to turn around, dump the data from the SOL testing routes and create new routes for our secondary students. I'd only ask you to consider the twenty-second, no earlier than twenty-second for that.
You can't pre-plan that? I don't understand, Dr. Benson.
We can't. I've investigated that as well.
I don't, I mean, if you have a plan for a bus route on March second and March fourth, why couldn't you know what the plan, the route is for March eighth for all of those students as well?
Well, the the return then would include seventh and then the nine through twelve students as well. Whereas the SOL tests the eighth grades. So those bus routes are being devised to transport those students. We have to then dump that data in Versatrans to then start with a new load of students to then allow the routing software to route. And we've investigated trying to do a standalone or some type of dummy platform, but that's not available to us.
So you can't dump that new information in until after the old information has passed?
Until the SOL testing date has passed, correct.
So it sounds like a technology issue.
Seems odd to me. I don't know if anybody else understands that and thinks that that's a reasonable
I do
excuse not to be able to do that?
I do understand only in terms of, I've seen uh the, the, I guess, software or uh blocking on the name, Versatrans. Versatrans. I, I've seen it work and, and how they have to input and, and I, I mean, it's a limitation of the technology, yes. And maybe there is other technology out there that does simultaneous things. I, I have no idea. I'm not, not a technologist. But, but I have seen the limitations of this, just only in working with, with Ms. Picarello.
It would seem to me that perhaps a challenge for Versatrans would be that in an ordinary year, there's not a need to develop multiple bus routes. And so perhaps it's not designed with that capability.
It's correct.
So, so if this board said, everybody goes back to school tomorrow, there's you can't do that because you got SOL tests coming and you have a, a bus schedule for them? And they wouldn't be in the bus schedule anyhow?
Well, no, I, I think you're hypothetical.
Let's say all those kids went back to school tomorrow. I, I know. That's a far-fetched. If they went back to school tomorrow, the software program can't route those kids until after the SOLs? So at the beginning of the school year, they do the routes in the summer for the start of school. Why can't they do the same with that? I don't, I don't
Because of the number of, of routing versions we would have going at the same time in this case with the SOL. In your example, your hypothetical, you don't have a separate routing system for just a grade level of students who need to be transported for the testing that we just got. And again, this is just one variable. I mentioned before, it does give just one week difference between the three through sixth. You know, I can tell you that this week we had a phone call with our state superintendent. We have another one next week where the new guidance from the CDC and the six-foot distancing was discussed. My takeaway from that was that I didn't want to go back and adjust our plans with a strict six foot since we've planned for three foot with masks at minimum and then to move towards six foot whenever possible. I can tell you our local data as far as the K-two is excellent. We've had no, no cases of transmission that I'm aware of, those students being referred for symptomatic for symptoms, rather, is virtually nothing. So that's encouraging. I anticipate that continuing. It does give us a week with three through six to continue to collect data and then to further justify our approach in terms of utilizing three-foot distancing with masks as we then look to bring the seventh through twelfth graders back just a week later after the spring break. So I don't mean to distract you, in other words, with just the bus issue alone. I think there are other logical reasons for looking at a twenty-second or twenty-nine start date for the secondary students than just transportation alone. But that is a major factor that I did not want to not talk to here because it, um, we obviously want to develop routes. We want to communicate with families to ensure that when we do begin in-person learning, it's not a, it's not haphazard in terms of, we've got our routes established and we've had communication with families in terms of pickup times, locations and that kind of thing. So I just appreciate your consideration there.
So, Dr. Benson, about the dates you mentioned, so I follow the March eighth, and then you mentioned March twenty-second for a potential seventh through twelfth turn, which I think last week the conversation was March twenty-ninth because that corresponded with the beginning of the fourth quarter.
That's
So March twenty-second is just one week before the fourth quarter. Does that really make sense or is it, is it more logical to wait until the twenty-ninth? I guess the semester change, are there, I assume there are like schedule changes for some students and that sort of thing, or is that?
Yeah, but I shared, you know, I think there was discussion, you know, Ms. Pansera made a good point that if you start a week before the twenty-ninth, that gives you an opportunity for students to adjust that are going in person in terms of orienting themselves to the building. Many of these students will be in the building for the first time, the freshmen and the seventh graders. And in my conversations with Dr. Boyd and Ms. Collins, you know, either is, is certainly doable. And there is merit to, to trying to orient kids before, is that we hit the fourth grade, fourth marking period, and you're ready to have a good full fourth marking period.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Benson. And to all of the principals and staff who joined us this evening. With that, I suppose it is time to adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Are we not going to talk about what we might want to try to do?
I asked if there was further discussion.
Well, I don't, I thought there was further discussion pasting Dr. Benson questions. I mean, I mean, what are, what are we talking about doing? Are we going to consider Dr. Benson's suggestion of getting the kids back for three through six on the eighth and then the seven through twelve on the twenty-second?
I'm sure, would that not be a motion? But, but this is a work session.
I'm not making a motion. I didn't say a motion. I'm just saying, is, is this something that we, you know, we're talking about? And then, I mean, that's something else that we also need to discuss. You know, at what point in time are we going to discuss making a motion so that we have, uh, give parents time to plan? I mean, we're looking now at today. It's the seventeenth, so we're only looking at, you know, what, one, two, two and a half weeks?
So the recommendation was made at our last meeting. Um, so the, the dates have been out there for some period of time.
But they just changed.
What?
They just changed.
Okay.
So
By four days.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Collins.
So it, this is in discussion and we could come to a consensus without making an action until the next meeting or at least have some direction because the entire county is waiting for a direction from this board. So I think it is prudent that we at least discuss it. I'm, I want to go back to school tomorrow. So anything that you all decide, if you can get two more to go back to school when you decide, then we could make a motion at the next meeting. So right now, I don't know where y'all stand on the, on the issue.
Yeah. Ms. Harris says that we're, we're ready to go. She's, she's ready to, all the, you know, K through six or, you know, the three through six, they're, they're ready to go.
I think they're all ready to go, but
I think they are too. I mean, you know, Dr. Boyd said a hundred percent in building his best education to, to provide. So you know, I, I think that it's a general consensus that trying to get our kids back into school in some form or fashion is a top priority at this point in time. And, you know, just
But Ms. Pansera, each board member should have a platform of their of views to determine when a three could be met. Because it's all, it's three have not been met for any type of in-person at this point.
Correct.
So
I don't understand what you mean, Mr. Collins. The three have not been met. By this time
So I don't know your platform on this. All, all, all I've heard from I've heard Ms. Pansera say that she's ready to go. You've heard me, I say I'm ready to go. You, the chairman and the vice chairman have not given an opinion to what you want to do.
Correct. That is correct. So mostly
So you're going to kick the can down the road? You're not going to have any
No, if you would like to allow others to speak, I'm happy to share my opinion. Ms. Hawks, do you have anything you'd like to offer before I make my comment?
I guess only a comment in that this, we agreed last week that this was going to be a work session, a discussion, an absolute discussion with updated plans submitted and an opportunity for us to fully explore the plans, ask our questions, ask questions that we had received from other folks. But there is no requirement that I tell you what my opinion is, Mr. Collins. And, and I really
Ms. Collins, Ms. Collins, let, Mr. Collins, let Ms. Hawk finish.
I have said clearly before that, that I'm not the expert here. The experts are sitting out there in, in the audience. And they have made their presentation. And I, I've tried to take as many notes as I could and and I've, I've gone back, I've, I've looked at, at your presentations, I've I, I've talked to my educator friends, to my counselor friends. I, I have, have asked questions and I am, I am, believe me, I am eager for our students to get back. But my decision is only to support the, the information that Dr. Boyd, Mr. Monroe, Ms. Harris, Ms. Malavec, Ms. Collins have all brought. And I think we can do that next board meeting.
So you want to yield to the principal's decision when we go back? When would you all like to go back?
Mr. Collins.
I did not say that.
That's what I'm hearing.
I did not say that.
Mr. Collins, let Ms. Hawk finish.
They have submitted their information to us for study and discussion. I, I think we can take this information and be prepared at our next regular board meeting to have a motion made and a decision made. I, I would certainly hope that that would be the appropriate way that our bylaws play it out.
So we're going to discuss it further at the next meeting or, you know, I, I mean, I've heard things like, you know, the board's holding people hostage because they're not letting us know what they're thinking. I mean, we just heard from you know, I wrote it down, we are ready to go. A hundred percent in building his best education. Amazing. Gratitude, appreciation, placement is checked. You know, transportation check, curbside check, all good, no issues. Very smoothly. Excited to put the plan into action.
Well, I've also heard challenges noted. I've also heard in increased activity required by all staff. There, there are challenges. This is not an easy thing to implement. And we know that. I mean, you know that. I, I certainly do too.
Yeah, there's, there's, and, and you know, that, that's the thing is if, if we, you know, went into this with the idea that everything's going to be peachy king and I have no worries and I have no concerns, then that's a big problem. That's a huge problem. But, you know, I don't think that we've heard any obstacles or challenges that are, you know, major deal stoppers and, you know,
I would agree.
And just the, the sole fact that you know, we, we went a hundred percent virtual because the majority of the people, the districts around us was going a hundred percent virtual. And now here we sit and the majority of the people are going back to hybrid or in-person. Some have even been in-person since, since August. And we're sitting here and saying, oh, I'm not really sure yet.
No, no, we are not saying that.
Can I make a comment? So it is our duty as school, as elected members to make a decision.
Yes.
So Ms. Hawk
This is a work session, Mr. Collins.
Can you let me finish?
Certainly.
So Ms. Hawk said this is a work session that generally motions aren't made, even though they could be, and no motion has been made. It's been the chairman's statement that there will be an action on the, I'm sorry, I take that back. There has been the vice chairman say that there will be an action on the next agenda.
There could be.
Okay, so I, I you said on Monday. I saw, I thought I heard.
Could, it could be.
So I, my question is, is there going to be an action item on Monday for in-person? I, I didn't say what the action item would be. I said, is there going to be an action item for in-person learning?
So I, if I'm offering my, my sentiments here, so I believe it makes sense for there to be an action item. Our next meeting is February twenty-second, which would be two weeks before our next regular meeting, which would be on March eighth, which would correspond with the recommended date for at least some portion of a return. So in order to give the schools and families adequate time to prepare, it would seem prudent to me that we make a decision sooner rather than later. Later not is in tonight. So it would be my recommendation that we vote on the twenty-second, which is next Monday, as to our intent for the March eighth or whatever it may be. And so to that, and then so to that end, I believe, you know, so I've heard all of my colleagues make comments about opinions. I mean, I'm a firm believer, we as a board are not responsible for making the plans. It's our responsibility to ensure that there are plans and to echo Ms. Hawk's sentiments. That is exactly And to echo Ms. Hawk's sentiments, that is exactly what Dr. Benson and Dr. Boyd and Ms. Harris and Mr. Monroe and Ms. Collins and everyone else that has been here to present this evening, that is what they have done. They are certainly the experts. They have put together plans that in their professional opinions have our students and our staff and our, the safety of all involved. They have the best interest of all of those parties in mind, as well as the education of our students. And it's Dr. Benson's responsibility to provide us with a recommendation as to what makes the best sense and the interest of the district. And I therefore am in full support of what the recommendation is from the experts. I do not feel that I am in a position to overrule that. So I would be in favor of the recommendation to return three, let me quote me here, what was it, three through six on March 4th or 8th in accordance with Dr. Benson's recommendation, in accordance with the delayed of the second vaccine dose and then with the March 22nd or 29th, or whatever makes sense for the middle and high school return. And I have no intent to not be transparent about that.
So we already went through all that. We've already had a plan. We already gave the, you know, we already, you know, let the experts tell us. They said that they were ready and we said no. So let's hope and pray that next time we'll do that.
We're not debating that tonight. I mean, I think that it's clear. So we're actually following some rules about a work session. So this is a work session and on Monday, there will be a decision. That's what it sounds like to me.
Yes. Now, Madam Chair, may I also go back to Dr. Benson's matrix, our matrix, and the CDC matrix that I guess the governor discussed today. I didn't hear his information fully, but everything is still dependent on that matrix position. Is that correct, Dr. Benson?
I think you're still wise to evaluate, you know, where we fall in that matrix. As I said last meeting, I am encouraged now certainly bring to Monday's meeting an updated chart with the matrix with the metrics as of that day. I'm pleased that our trend in King George is following the national trend. We are seeing far fewer cases as far as case incidents. I think today we were in the 400s, which is much better than the 1,000, you know, more than double just a couple of weeks ago. And our positivity, I anticipate in the next day or so. My hope is that dips below 10%, which would put us then back just into the higher, not the highest category. But I'll be happy to bring the updated matrix to you as I usually do.
And if we move into that higher, the second one over, the second column over, then that was the recommendation of, I guess, the health district and yourself that we would be able to open schools, given the plan.
Correct. That would predicate a recommendation to then bring other groups of students as its label on the matrix.
So, Ms. Hawk, I would ask, you look at the presentation I passed out because on page five, it clearly states or shows that the two schools that have had in-person since August have better indicators than we do based on their occupancy.
I did look at, yeah, I'm sorry.
So, you know, I mean, I just am hoping that we're not going to put 100% faith in the modality matrix because there, you know, I think there's a lot of flaws in that.
Well, if I may respond, I too have been looking not only in Virginia in our localities, but in other states. And I certainly have some relatives and interested parties across the country. And we've been talking about other situations. And we have to be very careful because it's not apples to apples and oranges to oranges. It's very different situations, rural to urban to suburban, et cetera. And yes, your two chosen schools were indeed rural and very similar. So I did appreciate that. And I did learn some differences that I hadn't been aware of, differences in implementation. So I think that was very helpful. Again, I think that's part of the role of the staff. I mean, we certainly have all been doing our own research. But I do think that the research that's most important is that the effort put forth by our own educators looking at our own buildings and our own transportation routes and our own healthcare options. And that's got to be our first source of information. So, and I don't, I don't mean, I'm not intending to be negative at all. I'm simply trying to follow the protocol that we all ask for in terms of work session being for discussion and information sharing and then moving to our board meeting to make that decision. So I'm not, Mr. Collins, I'm not at all being negative.
I didn't imply that. I just, I was just wanted to know. Sorry, I mumble even when I take the mask off. I just wanted to know if there was going to be an action on the next meeting for in-person learning. And Ms. Pincera said, I mean, I'm sorry, let me make sure I get this right. Ms. Gonzalez said that there will be. So that's, I didn't think there was any more discussion for tonight.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. So with that, we will adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
In a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We are now adjourned.
Thank you all so much for coming.